Twenty-two. One in progress. I start freaking out. Take over. What caused this?
Don't hit the cookie.
Called meeting to order. Roll call?
Commissioner Allen.
Present.
Commissioner Norwood.
Here.
Commissioner Musir Agusa.
Here.
Commissioner Roberts.
Here.
Commissioner Stallings.
Here.
Commissioner Orr.
Here.
Mayor Panekman.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Item number two, at the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the rescheduled regular session agenda. Item number three, study items 3.1, discuss the Leona Mitchell Waterline Project and possible loan forgiveness. Morali?
Thank you, Mayor. As you remember, we designed the water line in Southern Heights subdivision. It's about, it's a 12-inch water line, about 5,400 feet. The estimate for the project is about $1.8 million. The budget in the current year is $1.5 million. Currently, we are looking into applying for a loan through OWRB and DEQ. The loan is about $4 million. There is a 25% loan for Enid. We are providing the information currently, adding all the front-end documents that require to meet ODEQ and OWRB standards.
Yeah, let me jump in, Morali. Thank you. Two points to this presentation. One is the Leona Mitchell Waterline is about ready to go out for bid.
Yes, sir.
Right? And we're excited about that. That's a priority project that you guys approved in the budget, and we need, for various reasons, to get water down there and improve those water lines. Recently, we've become aware there might be some loan programs we can utilize, and I know Alan Brooks is on the way. So if he doesn't walk in in just a few minutes, Mayor, we might come back to this item and let him speak. But just like Morali said, this is a $1.8 million project. I know we have at least, we funded $1.5 in the budget. We believe that we will want to consider loan funding here because of the 25% forgiveness feature that he's going to talk about. So, and I believe that's up to $4 million. And so we have other water lines that we could potentially consider, or we may need some more, some more funds for water line replacements in Southern Heights and all over the city, quite frankly. So, at least the $1.8 million, I think it would probably be wise to consider a loan package for that. If we were to look at some other water line projects, we could do up to $4 million, what that means to OWRB and DEQ working together is that we would end up paying back $3 million. So I'm thinking, that's a good deal. But Alan will be here in probably just a few minutes and can speak to that. I don't know if you guys, the Commissioners that came on in May, I don't know if you've met Alan Brooks yet. I can't remember if we've had him here. But he is our Bond Counsel guy from Public Law Finance Group, so it'll be good for you to meet him when he comes in. You should be sure and give him a hard time about, he won't have socks on, and it's not because he can't afford them. Anyway, he's a guy that works for us and has for probably 20-plus years. John Wolfe might be with him. John Wolfe is our financial advisor, and I can't remember if the new Commissioners that came on and may have met John Wolfe yet, but John's been instrumental in every bond package that we do. He was also very helpful and continues to be on our financial analysis with the Colak project. So, hey, having said that.
Okay.
Do you have any questions that Morali can answer about the water line project now? And then, Mayor, if we could come back when Alan gets here and let him talk about the loan program.
Yeah, we'll circle back to that. Good.
Thank you.
How long do you think it'll take you to put that in?
Construction-wise, sir? Usually, we give that to a contractor. I mean, currently, we have material supply shortage. So, that's a 12-inch pipe, 12-inch PVC. What I heard from suppliers, they have three to four months lead time on those supplies. So, it depends on...
So, getting the material is going to be the lead time?
Key, yes, sir.
Not the actual work?
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Morali, on the, on the location, can you tell us in the yellow what streets those are?
This is the Leona Mitchell Street, sir.
Okay.
And it turns on France, and it goes, this is a steel street.
Okay.
And a block west, that's a third street.
Okay.
All right.
These are the apartments right here, buddy.
Good. I see Alan's here, so if he would like to come up and...
I'll let I prep him. If anybody asks about the socks, you'll know that I prepped him really well, so.
Your own, your own line, already, huh?
And a bowtie. He always wears a bowtie.
Yeah.
Well, tell me what you've said already, Gerald.
Well, hey, I told them that you were going to introduce yourself, that you've been our long-term Bond Counsel for, I don't know, three decades or something like that.
I'm a very, very old man.
It occurs to me that our new Commissioners probably haven't had you here for anything yet, so they haven't had a chance to, for you, them to meet you.
What a treat this is going to be for them, isn't it?
Yes. Well, I'm sure with you it will be, so.
Okay. Well, again, if I repeat what you've said, I apologize. DEQ and the Oklahoma Water Resources Board have announced or kind of updated an initiative through the Oklahoma Water Resources Board whereby they're providing or have the availability to provide some additional principal forgiveness. Under the Drinking Water SRF program, until, actually, this initiative has not been fully signed off on by EPA, I think they're expecting that hopefully by the end of this week. But what they're proposing is that we can get principal forgiveness up to 25% of a loan amount for qualifying projects under the Drinking Water SRF program, with that 25% being capped at $1 million. You know, the rule currently is you can get 25%, but it's capped at $250,000. So in other words, you'd maximize, under the rules effective today, if you borrowed $1 million, you'd get $250,000 principal forgiveness. Subject to this new program being available, we could maximize by borrowing $4 million and getting $1 million of that in principal forgiveness. So when that came out, Gerald contacted me, indicated that you all had some line projects that you wanted to do, and that you would like to at least consider, you know, projects that you perhaps would have done with cash, perhaps borrow the money and get the advantage of 25% of effectively grant money. We've had some follow-up calls with Eddie Randauer at Department of Environmental Quality. He heads up the Drinking Water SRF program over there. He indicated that based upon the project you had, estimated cost roughly $1,008,000. With that project, he would allow us, if this was the Commission or the Authority's desire, we could close a loan at $4 million with a commitment that we would have projects ready to bid in six to eight months for the additional amount over the $1.8 million. Again, you can just do the project that you have, take advantage of 25% of, let's call it a $1.8 million loan, or we could find some additional projects that would get us in that $4 million range, which would get you the most principal forgiveness available. So that's the thought process. I had John Wolfe run some quick numbers of three, if we did a $4 million loan, we would repay $3 million. You would draw the principal forgiveness first, okay? In other words, you would draw the free money first, so you wouldn't pay any principal or interest on that. $3 million today, the fixed rate on 30 years would be about 1.95%. John Wolfe rounded the numbers to two, and that'd come out to about $133,466 a year as a annualized interest and principal interest payment. So we're, you know, obviously at really attractive interest rates still today. This is, you know, one of the better principal forgiveness offerings that have been out there. The other thing we talked about is this money, there's about $8 million available that is accumulated in this, this fund for principal forgiveness that's available, and it's going to be on a first-come, first-served basis. So, situation like yours where you have a project, that you've already got an engineering report, and you've already got the planning documents done, and it appears that it would be available for what's called a categorical exclusion or a waiver of the environmental requirements. In theory, if, again, if it was the desire of the Authority to move forward, we could do that fairly quickly and hopefully be in a position to get some of that $8 million that's available.
Alan, do we typically draw these out for 30 years?
General rule of thumb, yes. That's, I mean, that's a decision that Aaron and your finance director can make, but that's, it's, don't have to.
Is there a penalty for early payoff?
Generally, they're...
You're just drawing it out for 30 years, even though it's only...
Generally, they're not prepayable, except for the Water Board's consent, that they have provided that consent in certain circumstances, usually only in a circumstance if they can prepay their debt. But again, we don't have to do 30 years. It's a 30-year asset, certainly, but again, that's a function of what you all decide in terms of those conversations.
Yeah, I think Aaron was going to have some conversations with John. He'll have some suggestions for us if we move forward with the loan stuff.
That makes, that makes perfect sense. So, again, obviously, the shorter the term, the rate would be a little less, we'd pay less total interest costs, our payment would be higher as well. So it's just kind of that balance that Aaron and John would discuss and make a recommendation to you.
If, if the governing body decided to go this loan route and decided to do it for $4 million, could you explain to them how we would, how we could do that, since we only have a $1.8 million project ready to go?
Well, again, the Water Board would let us, we have to have a project bid, okay, under their administrative rules, under DEQ's administrative rules for this Drinking Water SRF program. I've had a conversation with, again, with Eddie Randauer. He said if we have the $1.8 million project bid in hand, they would allow us to go to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board for approval on a larger loan, up to $4 million, but again, with a commitment that we would have the other projects that would take the balance of that $4 million ready to bid, or bids in hand within six to eight months of the time we closed the first loan. I mean, we're speculating that, you know, February, March, April is probably about how long, purely speculation, I mean, there, some of this $8 million is going to get used in loans, again, assuming this program jumps through all the hoops, but I don't think that $8 million's going to be there for a long time, so. I mean, one of the things we talked about was if we get the, kind of the nod that this is something that the City Commissioner, the Authority, would like to pursue, that we would probably come back to your next regular meeting and seek a final approval on the loan, and not to exceed $4 million, as an example, and an interest rate of not to exceed what we contemplate the rate would be. So you would have your final approval done, John Wolfe would get applications submitted to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board probably early in January, with the idea in mind, we'd move forward. I think the main thing that would slow us down is just how long it would take to get the actual engineering documents submitted, and I know you guys are really close on those, and have DEQ review those, give us a permit, and get out to bid on the Leona Mitchell, is that the correct name of the project, that project? Again, they have to have a project bid before they will take it to the Water Board for approval. So we would, you know, we would shoot, try to have it to the Water Board, probably in that February through, I think, Rob, you all typically don't have a meeting, as I recall, in March, so we would probably, the Water Board would probably have considered it their meeting in February, April.
We need to, we can.
Huh? I like that attitude. Anyway, February through April would be probably that timeframe, depending on when the Oklahoma Water Resources Board has their monthly meetings. But, I mean, is there, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
What is the shortest-term loan, and at what rate?
Oh, I can't tell you the rate, because I, I mean, I don't, I mean, you've got, you've got 50 basis points in administrative fee built in there. Again, we're looking at a 2% all-in rate on 30 years. I'd have to agree with you on that. It's, I mean, the Water Board is a practical matter, would probably let us do a four- or five-year term if we wanted to. That's...
That'd be pretty tough.
Tough to pay back. Well, don't we, don't we have a five-year plan? And don't we have this budget in this year's? And in next year's, we're looking at budgeting East Park or Kemwood?
Yes, we have other projects, like you mentioned, and so if we were going to borrow $4 million now, if that was something you wanted to do, trying to take advantage of this money...
Yeah, I mean, there's not a problem, I mean, if you, if you wanted to utilize dollars that you're...
Take advantage of the million dollars, so we can maybe get both of those projects done next year as opposed to just one. And we could do it on a short term, because we're planning it in our budget.
We'd need to run the numbers on your, your debt coverage, but I'm guessing you probably could do that easily.
Yep.
If that's the way you'd like to go, that would be an option.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we ought to let the staff come up with it, and then bring it back, and we can ask questions at that point. But I'm not a financial analyst, analyst, as probably we aren't, but, so, there's probably pros and cons to both sides of that, so let's let them come up with the plan and forward with it.
Yeah, we'll be happy to bring you some stuff.
Okay.
Maybe as soon as next time, because if we want to pursue this, we should be swift in submitting the application, right?
I would agree. You've already told me this, but I've forgotten. Gerald, when is your next December meeting?
On the 21st.
Okay. I mean, we could make an effort to be at this meeting, again, with potential, you know, resolution for final approval, and we could have a recommendation from staff and your financial advisor as to a term, but we could have a, you could make that decision in the meeting if you wanted to. Documents could be broad enough, the resolution, that we could get that decision made while we're considering the resolution generally.
Okay.
Is everybody, is everybody okay with, that's probably what we're going to do, and then I guess you can vote however you're going to vote. We think it's a good deal.
You know what, what we need to look at, and I'm sure you'll do this, is do we have the ability to cover the debt? You know, is that going to impact us?
Would you speak to that, Aaron, please?
Yeah, Aaron.
Yeah. The projects that we've discussed in this are mostly projects that we are looking at cash flowing already, and so there's not an issue with making those debt payments. He was talking about $133,000 if we did it over, you know, a 30-year period, but if we're only looking to do it over a five-year period, we have the cash in hand today for most of those programs. It would behoove us to take advantage of the forgiveness if we're able to move forward in a timely fashion and get that.
Yeah.
There you go. You got the nod.
How long does it take us to bid the one project?
Well, it's already, Morali, I'll let you or Chris speak to that.
It should be out to bid in about two months, maybe, maybe three, depending on how quick DEQ is in getting a permit back to us.
Okay, sounds like you'll be back next meeting, but could you also take a, or either now or next time? I didn't really prep you, but you might mention, you've been here at least 30 years. In fact, Rob and Jerry, when you were on the Commission last time, was, was he still, was he here not wearing socks, or was there somebody else?
No, that was another batch of yahoos. I'm telling you, those guys are dangerous to be. You know what I'm talking about?
Rick Smith was around.
Those guys were scary. I just, I gotta say, what would you like to say in light of my long, my long...
Gosh, I've only been here 17 years, but you've been our guy since all that time, along with Rick and John Wolfe, but you were here long before me, and so I don't really know when you started. I'd have to go back and look through those books from the 90s or 80s, those Bond Inventors, to look for your name, but you could probably just tell us.
If there are any of those old projects you didn't particularly like, I was not involved with those, okay? No. I mean, our firm has worked with the city for longer than I've been practicing law, and I've been practicing law for a while, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to...
But we, I've been up here pretty consistently for close to 30 years, probably.
And you work with probably most of the communities in Oklahoma, although you frequently tell me that we're your favorite.
To quote Rick Smith, "You're a tier-one client."
Okay.
That's his, that's his famous line, "Everybody's a tier-one client." We have very much enjoyed our relationship with Enid, and I was a little thrown off. I walked into the basement, nobody was down there. I thought, I looked at my...
That's how long it's been since you've been to a meeting, I guess.
I thought to myself, "Did I come on the wrong night?" This, this really is, it's a, it's a great opportunity, and the communities that are going to be able to take advantage of this, because the limited dollars are frankly those that already had a project, I mean, projects that are going to the Water Board for approval in December. It's contemplated, if this kind of pushes its way through the regulatory process, they'll be able to take advantage of it. The others that will take advantage of this are communities like Enid that have a project that is about ready to go. You, you have a great relationship with both the Water Board and DEQ. They took comfort in the fact that if you said that, you know, "We have these other projects, we'll get them bid in six to eight months," they have every confidence that you'll do that. And that, I mean, again, you've got, the city has a great relationship from a staff standpoint, working through these projects, and I think that has been helpful.
Okay.
Again, I think, I think it's to your advantage to, to do this, because you have projects ready to go that you would pay full price for, and why not get them done for 25% off? So, anyway.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions? Hey, thank you, Alan.
All right, I'm going to go down to the basement. All right, thank you.
There's no food left.
Yeah. All right. Item 3.2, discuss signed permit fees. Scott?
Well, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. As you said, this is a signed permit fees, and that's what it did start out as, quite some time ago. We started looking at our signed permit fees, and we wanted to take a stab at re-looking at the entire ordinance and trying to figure out what was clear, what wasn't clear. And Carol has done a wonderful job at putting this ordinance back into a form that is much easier to find what you're looking for. If you want to find what signs are prohibited, what signs need a permit, what signs don't, it's easier to find them the way that she's reorganized them. And so, in this effort, we have talked to business owners, we've talked to sign contractors, we've, we've been listening. And the goal of all of this is just to try and make the process to come and get a signed permit as easy as possible, easy for our staff to calculate what that permit fee might be, easy for a contractor to, to bid on a job and know, know what his fee is going to be. And so, in that process, we've just kind of gone through and made common sense changes based on feedback that we've received. So, I'll just go through what our, our potential major changes are, and Carol has given you each a packet that shows the strike-through versions of the changes. If you see a whole section that's just struck through, it's because it's been reorganized and put somewhere else. So, we really haven't changed as much as it appears in the versions that you have. But the objectives of all of this hasn't, they haven't changed for our signed permits. We, we want to make Enid look good, we want to make sure that signs aren't a distraction to drivers, they're not a safety hazard to people, we want to preserve property values and enhance the way our town looks, make sure our downtown and historical districts look, look like they're supposed to. And then there are some things that we, we want to avoid. We don't want any more billboards, and we, we don't want non-conforming signs to clutter up and be a distraction in our community. So, that's the objectives of what we're trying to do. Some major changes that are proposed in front of you, and are, instead of multiple permits being needed, like on the picture on the right, if there's a, a main sign and then maybe an EMC down below it, we're going to say, anything that's on a freestanding sign is one permit. So it just takes away additional permit fees, should help the calculation to be easier when we're making those permits up. There is a small change in insurance requirements that Carol put on there that follows the standard that we have for most of all of our other jobs. Most everyone carries more than, than the amounts that she's put in there. And then, like, like, say, say you, you buy a new business, and there used to be a sign there, and you're not changing the structural components to the sign, and you just want to put, you know, your business name on there, you can change that sign face out, and no permit is needed. So, those are some of the things that we want to put on there. Now, we do have a violation section that we've added, and this is for prohibited signs. And so if we see a sign that is up that is prohibited, a new sign that's been put up or one that is a danger, we can, we can start the process to remove the sign, and we can, we can have the ability to fine that person $200. Of course, our code department, we want to work with people, and we want to give people chances, but we have an ability here to put that into action for non-compliance whenever people are doing projects and putting up prohibited signs we don't want in our community. For permits and inspections, some of the changes we've made, instead of having a permit fee and then charging inspection fees on top of that, all of the inspection fees are included in the permit fee from now on. One of the other things that we listened to and heard a hardship from is sometimes when you're, when these sign contractors would be hired to do a job, they are not the person that hired the electrician if there's electrical work to be needed, and our current system would require the signed permit to put down who the electrical contractor is, and then we would then charge an electrical permit fee onto on that signed fee. And we have changed, we want to change that process and carve that out. And now, signed contractors can come in and get their permit and put their sign up, and if there is electrical work that's needed to be done, then an electrical contractor can come in and they can pull their own permit, and they can get the work done, and we can move forward, and that takes that away from the way our current ordinance was, was doing it. Another thing that we've looked at and compared what other cities are doing are footing inspections. And footing inspections are always complicated for builders, because, you know, you, you want to pour concrete, and someone needs to come in and look at it, but sometimes if you've got a, something that doesn't seem like it should be inspected, it doesn't make sense to the contractors, and those kind of things cause people to be non-compliant and causes them to just do their project anyway. And so, we looked at some other standards, and, and we think it's, it might be a good idea to not require footing inspections unless the sign is over 15 feet tall, or unless there's more than 120 square foot of sign area on the sign. Fees. So the way fees were calculated before was based on how big of a sign that you want. Now, we want to simplify that. We, we want to have two fees, $50 for every wall sign and for any other sign that you would have on a business, and EMC signs and freestanding signs. When I say EMC, that's the electronic message center signs, that's what EMC stands for. But $100 for the permits for those signs, or a freestanding sign. And then on every permit that we do, there's, there are OUBCC fees of $4.50. We still have to collect those on the, on each permit that we do. But that simplifies our fee process quite a bit, makes it easier for contractors to know what their permits should be. And we have, we have probably, in the version that Carol has, that's probably pretty close to the way that it will end up. There may be a tweak or two, and depending on your feedback, that we need to make, to make this as perfect as a sign ordinance can be. I don't know if there's a community that has a perfect sign ordinance, but we're trying to make strides and trying to listen to feedback and, and put something out there that, that makes sense. So, does anyone have any questions?
I have a constituent that sent me a very long text today about the fees, and I'm trying to understand, he's maintaining that you've increased, by what you've done, you've increased the amount that it's going to cost him, regardless of whether it's an inspection or a fee, and I can't, I can't unravel that. So tell me, is he paying, is he going to pay more?
It, it depends. There might be a circumstance where he would, but the inspection fees that were $25 a piece, if you've got a minimum sign permit... if you've got a minimum sign permit of $35, and you add one or two inspections to it, now you're at $85 for a signed permit instead of 50. So, there's a lot of situations where it would be less expensive since the inspections are included with it.
Is he talking about signs or the building permit fees that are on for passage in the regular meeting? Do you know?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Okay, because we've got two different issues floating here?
Uh-huh. We've got one for regular and this, and it might be the building permit.
This seems to simplify things to me. I mean, the one thing that's always steady, if you're gonna serve on City Commission, during your term, you will address signs. You're gonna address trash, water, streets. So, I was wondering when we were gonna get to signs. Here it is. And in my experience, this is pretty straight ahead. Plain language, you know, it just makes it smaller and in a box.
The goal is simplicity, and we have been listening to sign contractors and businessmen and taking all of their feedback and trying to make something that makes sense.
And I certainly appreciate the effort. I know that we've got a couple, we've got the clients with us tonight that probably do more signs than maybe anybody in the city. So, we've worked a lot with them, and I see they're here. Would you guys, I hope you're feeling better about this sign ordinance, because we still would like, we still have time for plenty of feedback, and so, I don't know if you can help us answer that question of a constituent to Commissioner Stallings, because I don't know if that was one of your customers or somebody else, but how does this ordinance, potential ordinance, impact you guys? Are we getting, is it going the right way, or would you like to help us?
Or have you seen it?
I think they've seen it, yes.
I'm Joe Klein from Klein Sign. Good evening, everyone.
Stand a little closer to the mic, please.
Oh, I didn't know that was on. I'm Joe Klein from Klein Sign, and good evening, everyone. We liked the $50 and $100 fee, other than the fact before, and I've been pulling permits since 1987, one permit fee took care of all the signs on a new business, building and pole sign or pylon sign or monument sign. You could have two or three building signs and one pole sign, and that fee covered them all. My question is, is this per each sign on the property? So, in a way, they're right, it's gonna be higher except for the individual company, business that's gonna go in a shopping center, and they have one sign on the front of the building, and the $50 fee is cheaper than the previous fee of $64.50 for a wall sign. The $100 fee is a little higher for the freestanding signs, but, you know, it is what it is. We've seen fees anywhere from $17.50 in Stillwater to several hundred dollars, almost $1,000 in liberal counties. So, you know, it's you guys' choice, and we'll live with what you decide with. The one thing about the footing inspections, I would like to see the minimum height raised at 20 foot instead of 15 foot. And otherwise, we are moving in the right direction, we believe, don't you think, Jesse?
I agree. Maybe else we're still working on.
Joe, I just wanted to hit one thing, and you had brought up about the multiple signs on the property. Within this ordinance, Scott had already said that if the signs are up there and we're just replacing the front, that there is no permit needed just to replace.
Well, yeah, we like that one.
That deal. So, will that help offset maybe some of, other than the new construction?
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, the little guys, the big guys don't care, and the little businessman does care.
Right.
And they're gonna spend what they want to spend to get a sign up, and that's the way it's been, and all corporations are like that. They'll go out of their way to spend what they need to get what they want. So, they're not the issue, it's the small business owner that's, they're wanting to keep, cut their costs, and, you know, most of them's not gonna have more than a wall sign or a building sign, and $150 is not bad at all. Okay? So, you're kind of in the middle on those. So, anyhow. I don't think I have anything else to say.
I'm only glad we're here. We have one more topic, we're gonna talk about Scott, and you guys can see that in a couple weeks.
Sometime soon.
Yeah, well, thanks for the time, and we appreciate working with Gerald and Scott on these issues and making them better.
All right. Thank you for your input.
And we appreciate your patience with us. Thank you. I know, Jesse, I think you were on a call with Scott yesterday with somebody soliciting feedback, and...
Yeah, I'm the Director of Industry Services for the International Sign Association.
Okay, yeah. And so, I think that's where we may have come up with a 15-footer deal, but we can certainly look at that, and we appreciate your help.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, homework. Let's all take a look at the bigger document that Carol made up and let Jody know whether you have any corrections or get with those within the next week, and that way, we can move forward, so we don't come to the next meeting and everybody's still looking at the same document. So, even a negative reply, if you think it's just fine the way it is, say, "Hey, no comments, looks good." Okay?
If we haven't gotten the electronic versions out, we can do that.
Okay. Good. All righty. Thanks, Scott. Item 3.3, discuss the proposed deregulation of taxi cab services, current public conveyance vehicles ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor and Board of Commissioners. My name's Josh Conaway, I'm your Assistant City Attorney, and excuse me, this is, it'll be quick, I promise. This is Josh.
Hey, Josh, this is Barney Meister, City Marshal.
Hey, Barney.
Running, and I'm talking to Chief Skaggs the other day. He said that he's been driving taxi on the weekends, and he's making pretty good money.
You've been talking to Chief Skaggs, and he said he's making some extra money on the weekends and evenings driving a taxi, huh?
Yeah. I don't know what I need to do to drive a taxi.
I've heard that there are a few taxi services in town, and I believe that Captain Skaggs actually drives with, or Chief Skaggs, excuse me, drives with Uber, but I think the Marshall's taxi service could be a pretty lucrative venture. You said you wanted to know what it takes to get a taxi, is that what I heard?
Yeah, I need to know what I need to do to drive a taxi.
Well, lucky for you, Marshal Fife, I've got Title III, Chapter 9's ordinance right here in front of me. It regulates taxis, and it says that you have to get a city permit before driving a taxi.
Oh, that's all I've gotta do?
Yeah, yeah, that's all, you just gotta come in and fill out this two-page form we have here.
Well, I think I can do that. Any other hoops I gotta jump through?
Well, careful there, Barney, it's not as easy as it sounds. Ordinance 3-9-3 requires that you provide your full name, your personal residence address, your business address, a complete description of your vehicle, which includes all the way down to the current mileage as well as the expected future mileage on that vehicle. Now, let's see here. You also need to provide a written statement of your taxi ride fares, a financial feasibility study to show the council that you can actually operate a taxi in the city of Enid successfully, your personal financial status, and, yeah, your experience in the transportation of passengers.
That's an awful lot of hoops to jump through for that. I do have a lot of experience transporting people, though.
I thought you might, Barney. There's also a $70 fee that you have to pay to get your license.
$70?
Yes, sir, $70. And also, there's a $30 fee per vehicle that you operate in the city as a taxi.
So, you're telling me to start driving a taxi, I have to pay over $100?
Yeah, yeah, and that's just to the city of Enid. You also have to pay for higher insurance coverage, and you have to get your fingerprints taken and send those off to the Oklahoma State Bureau of Investigation to have a full-fledged background check ran.
Wow. Anything else I need to do?
Let's see. Yeah, actually, the ordinance says you have to take your car to the city central garage twice a year to have it inspected. Now, make sure that you have your taxi meter installed and put on the front of your vehicle, or else you're gonna fail your inspection.
Are you serious? I have to get a taxi meter, like the ones in the movies? Does Walmart carry those?
Just like the ones in the movies, but I'm afraid you're not gonna find them at Walmart anymore.
Okay, so if I get all this done, do I guarantee I get to drive a taxi?
Well, sadly, no. You jumped through all the hoops, but your plan to start a taxi service actually has to get put on the Board of Commissioner's agenda. At your commission hearing, you'll have to show proof to the Mayor and the Board of Commissioners as to why the city of Enid needs another taxi driver. The Commissioners will have to consider if there's a need for your taxi service, if you're financially responsible enough to operate a taxi, the kind of taxi vehicle you're driving, the rates you're gonna charge, the current traffic congestion across the city, and then, of course, they're gonna inspect your personal character, experience, and your responsibility.
Are you kidding me? Did Skaggs have to do all this, or he pulled some strings?
No, no, he didn't have to do any of this. And actually, he didn't have to pull strings either. You see, he drives for Uber. And if you drive for Uber or Lyft, you are exempt from the city's regulations.
Well, the heck with driving a taxi, I'm going down onto Uber app and get work.
Sounds like a wise answer, Marshal Fife. You have a good night. Mayor and Board of Commissioners, first, I'd like to thank our Marshal Lambly for helping me out with presenting in a little more interesting way this ordinance. We're here to talk about the taxi ordinance tonight. Title III, Chapter 9 covers and regulates taxi drivers in the city of Enid. And I want to specify, that was a satirical conversation. As far as I know, the Marshal's plenty happy with his current job and not looking to leave to be a taxi driver, and I don't believe that Chief Skaggs is moonlighting as an Uber driver either. But they both would have plenty of experience transporting passengers in the city of Enid. You heard some of the key elements in the ordinance of Title 9, or Title III, Chapter 9, but to reiterate, before you can drive a taxi, a taxi driver must first come to the city of Enid, file for an application, pay a fee, have their vehicle inspected biannually by the city of Enid, install a taxi meter, which is actually pretty hard to come by these days, and they even have to come before you and present their idea of operating a taxi, and you have to approve it before they can begin driving as a taxi driver in the city of Enid. Now, full disclosure, this article, before I ask, make a recommendation to you, this ordinance that you have in your packet, it does also cover limousines, and it includes a provision about the airport shuttle. I've talked with Keston, he said that the airport shuttle's not been in operation for some time. While he's been there for four years, he asked the man who's been working there for 17. In the past 17 years, there is no knowledge of an airport shuttle in operation. This ordinance was a very valuable tool in prior years, but after talking with Summer, we've not had an actual taxi application pushed through since the mid-'90s. So, the reason for bringing this to the council's agenda tonight is actually, we had a resident in the city of Enid, Tracy Rainey. She came tonight to, so that you all could see her, maybe ask her any questions if you had any, but she was interested in starting a taxi service. The reason why is she works at a nursing home and knows it's hard for a lot of elderly people to, one, operate Uber and Lyft and the apps, and then, two, get around from appointment to appointment or go to buy groceries, get medications. She actually told me a story just a minute ago about seeing a lady walking on Willow having a hard time, and she stopped to help her, she was actually trying to get down here further south than City Hall, quite a ways to walk, especially for an elderly person. And that's what prompted her to want to be a taxi driver. She showed up to the city clerk's office to go through the proper channels, and that's whenever I learned that we have a taxi ordinance that people, whenever they go to operate taxis, would have to comply with. So, Tracy's here, and I'm thrilled she's able to join us. Just one more note on this, the Uber and Lyft comment that I made, we as a city are not able to regulate Uber and Lyft drivers. And it's not just Uber and Lyft, it's any, they call them transportation network companies. If you have a business or if you operate a ride-sharing service through Uber, Lyft, or any other company that qualifies under the state statute as a transportation network company, the Oklahoma statutes have preempted political subdivisions, which would be counties and municipalities like Enid, from regulating Uber and Lyft drivers. So, they're able to operate free and clear without any extra restrictions placed on them by the city, but if you wanted to operate independently, you would have to jump through the hoops that are set forth in Title III, Chapter 9 of the Enid Municipal Code. I've talked with the managers, Carol, also with Chief Skaggs, and the Director of the Airport, Keston, and the staff's recommendation is to repeal this Title III, Chapter 9, the Public Conveyance's Vehicle Ordinance in its entirety. Of course, we're not doing that tonight, we're just discussing it, but if the Commission would like, we'll bring this forward at a future meeting to have it repealed. Any questions?
No. Is she gonna talk to us?
She asked if I was speak for, but I'm sure if you have questions for, she'd be happy to answer any.
Okay. All right. Do you have the vehicle that's traveling around town, has a little blue taxi word in it?
No.
Okay, there's some, I'm seeing it everywhere I go, and it says, it's a blue taxi, it says T-A-X-I, and it's in there, and I...
There are actually two other, that I know of, two other taxi services being operated in the city of Enid. Neither of them have went through the process of getting a license, and what I hate about leaving this ordinance in effect is that we have people operating who did not go through the proper measures to comply with the ordinance, but we have somebody like Ms. Rainey who wants to open up Rainey Rides Transportation LLC. She's wanting to do everything correctly, and for us to make her go through this proper, these proper channels, we're only punishing those who try to abide by the law.
Okay. All right. If he covered it adequately, then you don't need to address this, but I just wanted to give you the opportunity.
Thanks for listening.
Yep, all right. Good.
Thank you for coming.
Now, Uber and these other carriers, while we can't put any other restrictions on them, I'm sure they do have restrictions, right? I mean, there's somebody that's looking to make sure they're insured and making sure vehicles are safe and all that kind of stuff. If we do away with the ordinance, what stops anybody that isn't getting any of that control? How would that happen?
That's a great question. So, Uber and Lyft, the requirements set forth by the state, there are insurance requirements. They internally do background checks on their drivers. We do not know what that looks like, we can't see what their restrictions are there, but they do provide, and it's actually, Uber and Lyft provides the insurance for their drivers. The drivers do not get their own insurance. So, that could be something if the Commission's interested in, is saying that we still want to have inspections of these taxi vehicles. I'm sure the service center may have an opinion about it, but that's, it's up to you to decide if you'd like to have those restrictions in there for those vehicles to be inspected. And if you'd like to set some mandatory insurance requirements that are above the state minimums, that's also in your prerogative for independent taxi drivers or operators, if they download the Uber or Lyft app, or any other app for that matter, and start transporting people under those ride-sharing platforms, we cannot regulate them.
Okay. So, do we have like a, so, basically, what I'm hearing is we don't even have a known list of Uber drivers or anything like that?
No, we do not.
They're just totally independent?
They are. The state, the reason why that came to be, Uber and Lyft have some very powerful lobbyists, is all I can make sense of it. Texas came through with a lot of municipalities and started regulating it, and then Uber and Lyft was very quick in their response. They pulled out, the biggest city was Austin, Texas. They said, "If you're gonna regulate us, we're just gonna pull out entirely." So, they shut down their platforms in that city, and they started going to states and saying, "We don't want this disparity of treatment between municipalities, we want you to control it, you to regulate it." And so, the state of Oklahoma did. They passed their state law, and then, as the final ordinance under that act, they said that municipalities cannot regulate the transportation network companies and their providers. And if it does help, as a side note, I did look at other municipalities around, some cities, Oklahoma City being one of them, still does, and Norman being another, still regulate taxis, or at least they, I shouldn't say that, they have ordinances on their books, just like we have ordinances on our books. I'm not sure if they actually enforce those strictly or not, if they're out there pulling over taxi drivers to see if they have their permit or license that's granted by the city clerk, but other cities like Stillwater, Lawton, Tulsa, they have repealed their taxi ordinances altogether.
What I think is important is, we've got like 30 pages of these ordinances, ordinance regulations.
It's actually longer than the signed ordinance, isn't it, Carol?
Well, it depends on, it's close. So, and, nobody is covered under this. So, the thing that I thought was good about, you know, we're not making people do it, the people don't come and talk to us, there are different people out there that you call and... and you get in their car. Now, the thing that I don't like about the state of it is that it looks like we're regulating everything. I mean, because if they go to enid.org and look at our code, they're going to think, we have doubled, we have checked and run up, run every single driver of these taxi peoples, we've gotten their, all their information, we've made sure that they're absolutely correct, everything is fabulous, and we don't even know who they are, because they haven't. So, you know, that's the problem with having something that isn't enforced, is that they may think that we've done a lot more. So if we're not going to do anything, we should repeal it. If we want, it's a simple thing to say, if you want to do it, and you don't want to connect up with a national organization, then bring in a copy of your insurance. That's significantly different than all of this stuff, and, you know, they have to have, they're supposed to have pictures, and, you know, I mean, it's the old time taxi cab drivers, and we don't have any of those.
I just got one quick question. Chief Skaggs, what happens when we pull somebody over and they don't have insurance?
They're issued a citation.
And what ends up happening with the vehicle if there's no insurance, or the person's under suspension, or?
Possibly, unless they prove proof of insurance at the court, or brings it in within the 48 hours.
Yeah, but we, if it was a taxi, and we pulled that vehicle over three or four times in a month and everything else, since they're transporting people around and they don't have insurance, what's eventually going to end up happening?
Suspension.
Suspension, going to end up impounding the vehicle, going to end up-
And to address something, since my name was brought up, I did look into Uber and Lyft. It's relatively easy to sign up with the app to be a driver. Those regulations we have are far more extensive than what Uber, Lyft, either one do, so that's why my recommendation was to repeal it.
Yeah, I think the issue with Uber is it's, if you're 70 years old and not used to technology, it might be harder for you than calling for a taxi, which is the way it used to be done. So I think that's the issue, not so much for the driver's standpoint as for the patron's standpoint. And you said Uber is subject to state requirements?
The, so state does set forth insurance minimums that must be carried for the drivers. I don't have the numbers in front of me. If I remember right, it was if they're actually going to or transporting somebody on a fare, they have the Uber or Lyft companies that provided their drivers a million-dollar policy. Pretty healthy policy. And then if they are, if they're on, if the Uber app's open, but they are not driving to a fare or delivering somebody, I think that there's a $50,000 policy that they have with their, their drivers or for their drivers. But aside from that, the regulations are sparse. They were very careful in making sure that Uber and Lyft didn't have to jump through a lot of hoops.
But there's no reason an independent couldn't receive the same state oversight, review?
The state will just require the minimums to be able to drive a vehicle. They have enlisted or provided, through the police powers, municipalities, the authority to regulate, if we choose, taxi cabs. Title 11, Section 22, 1118, 1118. So we can regulate them if we want to, but the state is not.
Okay.
You know, and when I was reading this, I was a little bit surprised, it didn't state anything about a chauffeur's license. You know, that's something that really caught my attention, and I was wondering if it was a requirement for those that Uber drive, do they have to have a chauffeur's license or just an ordinary license?
Ordinary license.
Wow.
And I would imagine that Uber and Lyft and those national companies that come in, they probably pay something that is pennies for them, but would be expensive for someone who has one car in Enid. I mean, you know, it could be, you know, they maybe have come in and done $5,000 or something, paid the state $5,000. If you're doing all of that all over the state, that's nothing, but for someone with a vehicle, that's a lot of money to start up.
Okay.
Well, in the bigger cities, it's a moneymaker. Because New York City Taxi and Limousine Commission, they only have a certain amount of medallions. Those medallions are selling for a million dollars apiece, and the Taxi and Limousine Commission book is about this big. It tells you what the driver's supposed to be wearing, you're supposed to have tubes going into the back of the car for air conditioning and fresh air, along with your barrier, and it's, it's a headache. It's a headache.
All right. All right. Anybody else have any? Okay, Josh, would you pass on to Marshal Fife that Gaslight Theater is always looking for talent such as yours?
Will do, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Item 3.4, Discuss Concrete Street Repair Project?
Yeah, the Concrete Street Repair Project, come on up, guys, is obviously a street project near and dear to all of us. We've talked about asphalt recently, and talked about we're going to talk about concrete. Larry runs that program as a construction manager, and Faith assists him with all that work, and so they put together a presentation to show you what we've done with the money this year, and they're probably going to say we've used all the money, but I think there's still a few projects to be done. We wanted to show you this because I anticipate, depending on how finances go, visiting with Aaron, that we may come back in January, and if there's more money to be used, then we probably will ask for some more money for streets.
Okay.
Yes, this is a update on our point repair program. We have completed 20 jobs so far this year, and Larry will be going over the before and after.
Yes, I see. When we go out and do these projects on this program, by the way, this is one of my favorite programs that the city of Enid has, we take a before picture that shows the damage of everything that we want to replace. So here's a before picture of one of the first projects of this year, the 2022 fiscal year. And then we send out the bid to contractors, give them a week to bring back the bid to us, then we award that bid, and then inspections, all that, and then afterwards, we have after This is what it looks like now. So out of all of our 20, Kelly Drive was a huge project, and it was divided up in phases through three different years. We're on three years of this program now, year three, so we'll just go through all of our 20 projects. Two of them are still-
There's one in progress right now, and two are going to start shortly.
So we'll just go through these pictures real quick for you, Commissioners, Mayor.
There's a lot.
Yeah, wow.
Yes, yes, just keep going, I think. Let them have time to see it. This is the project we're on right now, the last, the east paving lane, which was the last paving lane, was poured this morning, so that's where we're at today. We still have a little bit of work left, backfill, saw, seal, clean all the control joints, things like that. This project is planned to start Thursday. It's a big project. This one is planned the end of December. And this one is planned also.
And then we did put them on a map to kind of show that we are spread out throughout the wards right now, we're not kind of, we're trying not to show favoritism to certain ones, so we're pretty spread out, that's all 20 of them on there. And then this is a budget comparison, to kind of let you know, right now we are at our halfway point in comparison from last year. We have spent that $600,000 on those 23 jobs, which the 20 we just showed you, and then the one that's in progress, and the two that are planned. I did put the square feet on there, that's kind of how I've been measuring our efficiency since, it's kind of hard to keep track with different contractors, time-wise, weather, a bunch of different factors, so I've been doing it by square feet to see, you know, if we're still getting as much done as we've hoped to be. This is our projected list. This is what we hope to get done this year. It's, I think we're on year two?
Year three.
Year three of our five-year plan. But again, you know, it does depend on contractor availability, weather, and if there is like an emergency or some job comes up, we can bump it up, but right now, this is our goal to get done this year. If not, it'll be beginning of year four.
With these jobs here, this year were big projects. Most of these jobs were higher up in the money because they were bigger and the damage was more extensive. So what we don't get done in one year, we put down, we move over to like year four, and so on, so on. Most of our bigger projects was this year, year three. I think that's about it.
Can you back up one slide? Well, two slides now.
Oh, maybe, maybe.
Okay. Is that, so the bottom numbers is this fiscal year, and the top numbers was last year?
Yes.
Yes.
So we're doing half as much this year as we did last year?
Well, that's where we're at right now.
That's where we're at right now, Mayor.
Oh, okay, it's year-to-date, all right.
Yeah, we will do a budget request.
All right.
You can see the top one, Mayor, it says project amount, 41 projects.
Last year in FY '21, we budgeted originally in the adopted budget $600,000. During the course of the year, we, sales tax came in higher, we were able to allocate $500,000 more towards the program, and they worked ahead on their list. And again, this year, budgeted $600,000. They've expended all of that to date, and we still need to see where we're coming in on sales taxes. Not quite as high compared to budget as it was last year, so we'll see as those funds become available if we can bring something back to appropriate more, and they can continue down their list.
Yeah, I recall the additional money being provided last year, so that makes sense now. Thank you.
I respect the fact that they are spread throughout the community in each of the wards. Thank you very much for giving everybody a little taste.
I would also comment that the work that you're doing out there, you're doing great quality work.
Yeah.
I've looked at a lot of your work, and it really is. Your metrics are good, too. I just did, ran the numbers on your, you're doing it for about $17 a square foot, it looks like, which is a very good, very good rate.
Yeah, and concrete went up this year, so we, on an average, we were at $15 a square foot, but since, and every year, concrete's going to go up, so, so we're at 17 this year. Yes, sir.
And just to speak just briefly, if you could go back to the slides that showed the long list of things, I think you had a slide of some things we're getting ready to do, or 22, yeah. You may wonder, where do these, where do we come up with these things? Well, we, you could talk about all kinds of fancy metrics, but I think it's as simple as, I see stuff, you see stuff, our citizens call in to Public Works and get you, and get them on the list. You guys, if you see something, call in to us, we'll put it on the list, and we just try to methodically work them off. If something comes up that we think is a higher priority, which you can talk to them about, we have to adjust the schedule, but that's the way I view how these things get done. But Larry, you may, there may be more science into it than that.
You're correct, Mr. Gilbert. Another is high call volumes from our customers, which are our citizens. Inspections, in our Carter Craft program, I have streets that are assigned to me that are, you'll see up here, phase one on certain projects, those projects, there's just so much damage done to them that we've divided them up in phases through the five-year program. That's high call volume, heavement, thermal heavement, thermal expansion, thermal cracking, subbase, back when contractors were able to use sand as subbase. Well, we don't do that anymore. It's rock subbase now, or CKD. Yes, mountain traffic over them, so we have a program that like Everett will send to me, let's go inspect this, let's get a rating on it, but that's, a lot of it is that right there, is what you see, get ahold of us, Gerald's correct in that, and what we see, high call volumes.
I would also like to remind everyone that we have the See, Click, Fix app.
Yes, sir.
I know that people utilize that, and I know that you all are paying attention to that when it comes in.
Yes, sir.
And that gets consideration on these projects, too, so you don't have to pick up the phone and call. You're welcome to call us anytime that you'd like, but if it's easier for you to download the See, Click, Fix app and utilize that, we welcome that technology.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Thank you.
On that note, I do have a question. If a constituent calls, and they call the general number, who should they ask for?
Normally, that's sent to me, sir.
So that's held, it's done at the switchboard, if someone calls and says, I have a complaint about my street?
Yes.
They're just going to route it to you?
And depending on what the amount is, we do projects 50,000 and below, and then we go from there. Sometimes Mr. Gonanski, Mr. Catta, Mr. Unruh will call me and say, take a look at these streets, Everett, and, you know, I'll go from there, but most generally, when it's in that phone call, they'll usually direct it to me. Yes, sir.
And what may happen sometimes, too, at the receptionist's office, if they're calling up for that, they'll end up sending them to the street department, which is Ashley Humphrey, and Ashley will know, is this something she can address? And I think maybe that's how it gets routed to you, Larry, or Faith, to get on the list, or if it comes to Everett. So, yes, and if, and if you want to give a name, you could say Ashley or Larry.
Yeah, it's a wide venue.
And I can also get it to them as well. This is a great program, it's been, it's been great now for three years, so we want to put as much resources in, and I'm glad you see it as a good use of funds, it's 17 a square foot. I was trying to think, sometimes, you mentioned the base issues. I will say, the project a couple of years ago, I think, was Green Leaf Circle.
Yes.
Over in Cedar Ridge, and you fixed a lot of stuff there with the contractors, and it's really nice, but as we were looking at that, I remember we had to get out of there because there's still a lot of bad concrete in there.
We would never get out of there.
And so we'll have to go back in there and fix some more stuff.
Yes.
And I think that was a case where the developer may not have, our standards may have been different or something, but-
Every road, every residential road in there, the subbase is sand, so Cedar Ridge is age and subbase, and of course, we've got a good engineering department that has changed our standards to where we use rock or CKD, and it has to pass the testing, and no more sand, so, but a lot of these roads, based on age, has been back when you could use sand as subbase, so, and that's one of those areas that's divided up in phases, so.
One of the things I think we also, or at least I've learned over time, is this is, a lot of these streets are older streets, older concrete streets, and all of these streets are relatively good except for the bad spots. But even sometimes, new concrete, because I remember, I don't know if it's on your list somewhere, somewhere over on Oak Street, maybe that was one of the pictures, it was only a year or two old, but it was out of its warranty or what have you, and it buckled.
Correct. It buckled, yes.
And then we had to go address it, and we did it with this program.
That's where the thermal expansion from the heat and cold and heat, and we had some very, very hot days this year that caused that, so, and I think we've addressed that in meetings, that putting our expansion in more places in those projects will help out with that, so.
Good. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you all, and I appreciate the update.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Item number four, we're going to adjourn, and we'll recon- Item number four, we're going to adjourn, and we'll reconvene here at 6:30 for the regular meeting.[1782.33]